Two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one big A one, personnel matters concerning appointments to boards and commissions and discussion concerning prospective candidates for employment.
Sorry.
Two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one big A three involving acquisition or disposition of publicly owned real property.
So, I'm sorry.
May I have a roll call please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And don't think there's any modification for the public session agenda, so. Um, welcome guests on the internet. So let's go on to the consent agenda if you would look at the council meeting minutes from November fourth, twenty twenty, and once you look at them, if I can get a motion to accept them as written.
I move that we adopt the November fourth, twenty twenty council meeting minutes as written.
Okay, another roll call please, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right. Resolution twenty twenty dash three nine, uh, the resolution accepting the terms and conditions of a FEMA grant for flood warning system.
Mr. Mayor, I would just point out that the notification that we received this grant surprised everyone because we actually applied for this grant five years ago. And just got notification of the fact that it had been approved. So this was actually requested back, um, when you had all the improvements going on following the tornado, I guess, that came through the town. These are very welcome improvements and we'll certainly accept the grant, but I thought it was kind of interesting that this was a real sleeper. Everybody had to kind of scratch their heads and say, when did we apply for this one? But we're pleased that we have received.
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty nine as written.
Sir. Another roll call left here. Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And then, uh, discussion of street naming process, um, and review of draft ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven. Any questions on that?
I guess what we're looking for is whether the council in general desires the terminology that's in there. And if in general you're okay with it, with this draft, we're gonna touch this up and bring it back for a vote later because of some organization. This was kind of mirrored from another community. And if you'll, if you kind of look through there, the way we typically have in the rest of our ordinance is to say that division one would be a general provision. And so everything that applies to the entire body of the ordinance or that you would have would go up in a general section. Here, it's a little bit confusing because that section seventy one, seventy two, uh, has naming criteria. But then if you go back to the naming of rooms and buildings, that there's other criteria and, and, and so it was just confusing as to why you may have, uh, six naming criteria or five naming criteria in one spot and then five in another that are, that are pretty similar. So I think that we can, if, if this is in general what you'd like to see, I think we can streamline the ordinance a little bit with some different language, um, going forward. But we wanted to at least put it before you to make sure this is in general what you desire regarding the naming of streets, lands, and public facilities.
The only thing I would add for consideration is just to make it clear about renaming, um, that naming, you know, naming or renaming, because I'm not sure, you know, because, because we had that discussion before about what happens with the new versus old. I mean, is this gonna apply to a subdivision, you know, if somebody comes in to, you know, subdivide some property and put in, you know, a little road, are we gonna name that? Are we gonna let them name that? Or how is that gonna, I mean, I just think, just for clarity's sake, we just wanna be clear about whether this is just for renaming already in existence stuff, um, which would be different, I think, for, you know, obviously a, a building or land or, you know, we put in a new park or something, that'd be one thing, but it just, you know, for roads in particular, they're, they're pretty much all named if they're in existence right now. So we just wanna be completely right there.
The subdivision ordinance within the town code requires a developer, uh, when he or she comes in for a permit for subdivision to name those streets. And part of the process has the town review to make sure that that name is not already, you know, in use.
Yeah.
Elsewhere in the town.
That makes sense. I think maybe it's just worth mentioning that that process, you know, you know, except in cases, you know, for the trees parts, you know, where, just put in a sentence that says, you know, except in cases covered by.
Okay, that's.
Ordinance seventy dash, you know, one fifty, you know, which is the, you know, subdivision involved by. Just, just so that, I'm just concerned that some, you know, a, a citizen who might not know will be, might be confused.
We can add that or refer to that section and that's only more.
Thank you. Anybody else? And then we'll move on to roundtable discussion. Mr. Penn, a little of the streets.
I'm just gonna ask, have we had a chance regarding the lights in the park? Could you do me the review of this?
Uh, yes, sir, we have, and you've stolen my thunder for something I was going to bring up.
Okay, have a, I'll, I'll draw my question.
No, 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 that's all right. We have checked out all of the lights. They are all operational, everything is ready. I think, uh, as I understand, because I've had to go to school on what has been the norm here in the town, my understanding is that in the past, the actual tree lighting and turning on the lights of Jackson Park occurs kind of in concert with, um, the Christmas parade. This year, because of the virus and a lot of other things, uh, with the council's concurrence, we're gonna have a, what I'll call a virtual tree lighting. We're not gonna have the traditional ceremony, singing of songs, speeches, all of that. Probably turn them on again with the council's okay. The afternoon of what I'll call Thanksgiving Eve, and they will then stay on and will be on regardless of what happens with the Christmas parade because a number of communities, so far, the J C's are still planning on their reverse, uh, Christmas parade, but in talking with my counterparts this afternoon, in a conference call, many of the jurisdictions in the Newland Valley and elsewhere are having to rethink with the governor's latest, um, limitations on groups, uh, just how those events will happen, if they'll happen at all. And in fact, in one instance, I'm told that, uh, they are, the community is limiting the number of people that can be on a float and are encouraging that to be family members. So we're not sure how all that's gonna play out. But clearly, the lighting of the Christmas tree and those lights has been an important activity, and so we'll do that virtually, we'll announce, uh, the time and everything for that, and we will video that and put it on our Facebook page, uh, so that people can actually participate perfectly if they, you know, want to do.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things, uh, structural wise, coming down from Palm Drive, the old garage on the left, uh, take a look at that, and I, and I think maybe it's already on your radar, the old gray house just across the fast shop, the roof is actually falling in on it, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, this person, y'all already, that's already on y'all's radar right there.
I think it's under cover.
I'm pretty sure it is. Those are just two things that have been asked about, uh, I told him to lay them on. The only other thing I have is I'm looking forward to, uh, uh, working with you, I'm excited about it, uh, in the future. I think it's gonna be great for the town, it's gonna be great for the council, and, uh, we'll talk about that one down the road. I'm really excited about it. I, I thank you for, thanks for the work you've done already. You've made a world of difference. District staff that you've already put in place, I, I, I can see, I can tell a difference.
Well, you've got great staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Is that from this evening?
Mr. Reese?
Um, Miss Bertram, I guess this is, well, this might get to the manager's report, but I, I think the, the public will be interested in the status of the Martin's property and your conversations with them, and, um, if you could update council and the community on that, um, that would be appreciated. Um, and, you know, if there's any sort of input you'd like from us, um, we'd have to share it. Oh, and one more thing. This is something that probably isn't gonna get solved in the next week or month, or even maybe in the next six months, but, um, we have some very old playground equipment here in, in the town, and, um, there are some elements down at the train station, I was down there with my kids this past weekend, I mean, there's some nails that are exposed and some broken pieces of wood. And, you know, just from a safety perspective, I think, you know, we need to deal with that, but, I mean, and I, and I'm not fault to anybody who's, who's, you know, in charge of maintaining it, because those are probably as old as I am, and I'm about to turn forty. So, um, I think that we as a council need to come up with a plan to do something about those, and I'm, you know, I'm just saying that because I think, you know, I've noticed in particular because we don't have, you know, we have limited in, in what we can do, you know, as far as recreational opportunities under our current circumstances, and I think, you know, if we're, really are trying to help the community grow, that's the kind of thing that, you know, if we wanna get people with families to move here, that's something that people look for, you know, what's the, what's the playgrounds look like, you know, and, and that's the kind of thing that, you know, that might be a make or break for some, for some people. And, um, I mean, I know that there's some money put away, and, and maybe we just need to come up with, you know, some ways to make that happen, you know, in a way, hopefully sooner rather than later, especially if we're gonna be dealing with this COVID stuff. More stuff we can do outside the better, especially come, you know, uh, you know, late winter, early spring, um, doesn't.
Let me comment on one thing I like to mention, and I agree with Mark one hundred percent. If the guys remember about two, three years ago, I got on the big kick on our park because it's not ADA. And kind of fell upon the, not by us, but kind of fell upon the, so I agree with, uh, what Mr. Reese said, one hundred percent, and what I would like to see going forward by the spring, and I would be glad to sit on it, I'm sure he would, and I'm not speaking pre-was, he probably would, but, is, I wanted to develop a little committee, uh, for these parks and, and put in a wish list for council. What we would like to see in these parks, uh, you know, it's, it's more to a park to spread mulch. It's not ADA, they are, but they're not, there's a lot of things can be done for those kids. It's not cheap, but still, yeah, he's correct. Parks is huge in economic development, really through the top of the list, that's rational parks. So I, I, I agree with what he's saying, and I would be willing to sit on it if, if the mayor wished, uh, would, I would want many, four, five people maybe get a parent with an ADA child to help talk about it.
Well, I would say a couple of things. First of all, I wouldn't be surprised, and I have not had an opportunity to go up to the few parks that we have to look at your equipment, but, um, most playground equipment in older communities is not in compliance with current codes as it relates to safety. And so when you start inventorying them, you really then need to start replacing them. And there are some very finite regulations now in terms of how they have to be blocked off, mulch becomes very important, I mean, and there are even, um, measurements that you have to take about how much, you know, how many inches of mulch for different things. As we are putting together our capital improvement plan that I hope to bring to you all maybe next month, what we need to do in the area of parks will be on that list as well. And probably what you're going to need to do is prioritize within certain categories, let's use playground as an example, which ones are in the best or worst condition, which ones you know have greater use than others, just like we found in the case of, uh, what I keep calling them a Gill property, that we had a tennis court that really, you know, was in great disrepair, but it wasn't being used. And it used to be that every community put a tennis court, you know, at every, um, park, and yet what they found over time was that was not as important as sport or activity, and you didn't need as many of them, but you needed to have a really good one maybe, uh, or two, you know, in a community, but not feel like you had to have one in every neighborhood park. So we do need to look at those things, and, uh, we need to have some citizen input on them, and I would certainly agree that at the point that we've got a capital improvement plan and having a committee to work on that would be very, very desirable. And perhaps then you can also arrange for some fundraising, uh, to improve. And I've worked in communities where, you know, neighborhoods or alumni groups, you know, that maybe used a particular park, would donate something, or you could have a bench named after somebody, or bring in playground equipment, really look at the needs of the community, because you don't need the same kind of playground equipment in every neighborhood either. So it is an issue. I'll look at the particular ones at the train station, I know we have some challenges in the area of the train station where we have more probably vandalism there than we should, um, and the equipment has moved, um, benches and tables and stuff, and that movement doesn't help with their condition. But we'll look at those right away, but I think it's going to need to have a systematic review of what you have and how do you wanna prioritize every place. We'll put it on the list of things. And I'm glad you said not in next month or even six months.
Yeah, well, but just, you know, there were, there were some things in there that just, that, that need to get looked at, you know, sooner rather than later, and then, I know the plan, but, you know, if there's, you know, we have, we have some protection, but there's also, I mean, we just don't want somebody to get hurt.
No.
And it's, you know, some of them are getting to the point where we have concerns, I think.
I think just one question that, something you said there made me think about regarding the train station part, are we, are we still, at one point we had discussed, um, having bike patrols through the park on a regular basis? Are we, are we doing that?
In fact, um, in your weekly report, you see that the police chief is now in his report telling you where the foot patrols are.
Okay.
On a weekly basis, and they do, you know, vary, but the train station is always, um, almost without exception, um, on the list, um, that they regularly do that. We don't have bike patrols, but we do have foot patrols that are going in a number of areas. So take a look at that, and if there are areas that you think need attention in that kind of a approach, please let us know and we'll make arrangements.
I, I, I don't know how far they go, I know that my, you know, my experience on the trail occasionally leaving, uh, the train station park is kind of, is occasionally sketchy.
Okay.
So I didn't know if they were riding the bikes out.
They're not really making much use of the bikes at all. That's something that I'd like to see more of.
Yeah, we had discussed that at the council, previous council, and it was important to, to that council that, that we do the bike, bike patrols. Uh, I think it just sends a good message to the community.
And with the parks, um, question, Sixth Street Park, we've got basketball, we've got a little playground, we've got a tennis court, we've got another corner that's sitting there empty, and I've been wondering and thinking for a while about, can we look into a dog park? Because there's a lot of people with dogs and where they could just let them run. I think that would be a perfect place. There's nothing on that property there.
I've done some of those, and they're not quite as simple as it sounds, but I also know that they're very, very much used in any community that you have them. In fact, there are people who go from one community to the next just to take, um, their dogs to a dog park. So we can take a look at that, and then you say it's the empty corner.
It's the northeast corner.
Northeast.
Washington and Sixth Street. For your, Miss Bertram's not there. I think I got that right.
Point me in the right direction.
All right, and given that our process for naming the town manager has taken longer than originally anticipated, and the cost of Miss Bertram's service was estimated at three to four months, Miss Bertram has offered to withdraw from the contract and agreed to work part-time as an interim town manager until the end of the year as a temporary employee of the town. This arrangement will save the money, not save the town money in these uncertain times as well as not rush the council to a decision. The council accepts this arrangement and thanks her for continued attention to the town's finances. With that, town manager's report.
All right, well, as I said, Mr. East kind of took one of my items, uh, away from me, but that's fine. I did want to mention, uh, that, um, I understand that the council received a report back in September of last year from the Forest Service, uh, wanting to do a controlled burn in the national forest that came on to town-owned property at Gatewood. And they were able to, uh, handle one phase of that burn, um, before COVID hit, and then had to delay, um, the second burn until now. And so, um, I wanna just inform you that subject to the way the wind blows and everything else, because there's a book that's this thick that tells them when they can actually do a controlled burn, we may have one, um, at the end of this week. Um, and of course, the Forest Service takes responsibility for notification of all the property owners and everything. We will have, um, some fire equipment on standby, um, as we've done in the past, but I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that that would be, uh, done, um, and that the council had previously given their concurrence, uh, to that process, which is actually to the benefit of our property and to the National Forest Service. So if you see anybody who lives out that way, or they say anything to you, please be aware of that.
It might be helpful if we put that up on the town Facebook page for, for the benefit of those folks who use that, just for record, because I'm sure the Forest Service lets the property owners know, but it would be nice to the general public since those, that area is open to the general public, it'd be worthwhile, so.
Now, Gatewood is closed for the season.
Well, but you, you.
But you still bought that area.
You can still get on the trails out there, and so it would be, it would be, I think, you know, and I know there's, I didn't have you out there, there's people parked on through there, I'm hunting and stuff like that, so just any, any information, it doesn't hurt.
Okay, well, I've got a map and everything's a little secret, that's for all.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
And then, uh, the council had the opportunity to briefly meet Brady Deal, um, who is our new planner slash economic developer. Uh, he also will be serving as the town's zoning administrator, which is a role or function that was included in the planning activity. And I would like the council to, um, officially approve him as the zoning administrator. The state and town, and town code require that the council concur in that appointment, so at the appropriate time, if you are willing, uh, to make that motion and approve it, I would appreciate it.
Would you like us to do it now?
Be happy to.
Uh, so is it Brady Deal, is that correct? So, uh, we, I move that Brady Deal be appointed to town's zoning administrator, uh, in accordance with town and state code?
Sir.
And may I get a roll call, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliff?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Now, you had asked me, uh, Mr. Reese, to make some comments about the Martin situation, and I'm happy to do that, um, at this time. I think the council was well aware of the several appearances of, uh, Mr. Martin and his daughter. Since the last council meeting, I have met with, uh, Ms. Martin. She came in primarily, uh, to ask about access to some of their personal property, which we found out had been stored in a town-owned building, um, which we have not given permission in the past for, uh, its use in that regard. We did change the locks on that building, um, and put up no trespassing signs at that meeting with her, uh, because she really had nothing to report as to progress, um, on the two options that the council had suggested she pursue. One, the idea of them somehow finding an access, um, to the rear, um, of the location of the trailer, because the council has indicated previously that the current access, uh, would not be allowed, given the development potential of the property, some ten acres, that, uh, clearly, uh, is not in its highest and best use at the present time. I think I previously indicated to the council that housing is a great need that this town has, and that's certainly one possibility for that property. At the time that I spoke with Ms. Martin last week, she indicated that, uh, they had spoken with representative of the McGill Village, but didn't have a answer back, uh, from the owners as to whether or not an easement or access could be given to the rear of their current location. I asked about, uh, where they stood on, uh, the issue of relocation, uh, the answer was pretty much what we had heard before, that they had looked at, uh, several properties, uh, one was only available for rent and his, her father wasn't interested in renting, one had been sold, and one was in the county and would require second. I strongly encouraged her to bring to my office or send to my office by last Friday, an update that could be shared with the council prior to today's meeting, uh, that indicated a timeline for both of those options, and gave her examples, saying, you know, for example, um, if you are asked or required to relocate, um, how long would it take for the piece of property in the county to get septic installed, you know? How long would it take, um, A, to have someone actually move the trailer once the septic was installed and say, you know, this is gonna take three months, this is gonna take four months, so the council could see, uh, that there was a plan, uh, to be executed on both options. Likewise, on, uh, the option to, um, potentially purchase the property, where were they on the easement issue? She said she had spoken to the McGill folks, but didn't have an answer, hadn't spoke with them in, uh, a week or so. And I encouraged her again to put that in writing so that the council could, in fact, see that progress was being made in both, uh, options. I did not receive anything from them last week, and I actually expected them to be, uh, here this evening because, um, she was very concerned that we had locked a building that we did not know they were using or had access to. And I advised her that, um, access to that property would not be given until the council was informed as to its contents and when, and that they would be participating in the decision about when that property would be made available. So I'm afraid I don't have any more to report at this point. I would say to the council that I do think, um, that the public needs to understand that we're not talking about, um, taking anyone's property, uh, their property is in fact only the trailer, uh, the double wide trailer that they put there, that it's town-owned property on which that trailer has been located. And, um, we are not going to be able to allow the kind of access that that trailer has had in the past if we're going to develop that property. And I would encourage the council, uh, to allow us to start marketing, uh, that property to see what the potential is for its future development involving the community, the neighborhood, and helping to hear what those plans might be and helping the council before a decision is made as to its eventual use. But it's ten acres, um, in the community that, uh, is basically flat, uh, by comparison to many of the topographical challenges that we have in the town. And I think, given the demand for housing, uh, that there's a viable solution out there that would benefit the community in general, and certainly for. and certainly provide housing to people who I would like to see live in the town, uh, not just work here and go someplace else at night. And I think I've told the council previously that, uh, there's a fairly recent report that indicates that something like only 18 to 20% of the people who live in town actually work here. Everybody else is commuting and then living someplace else. And we need to reverse those numbers. Was that what you wanted, Mr. Reese?
Yes, I, I think so. I mean, it, it, it does seem like that if we're not being given timelines, that maybe we need to be providing the Martins with timelines. Um, and, um, I think that, um, we, I think we all agree that, um, we need to see something happen with that property. Right now, it's essentially, you know, except for a, a small portion of it, which some people use for the skate park, um, is not, is being essentially unused. Um, uh, or certainly not used to the potential that it should be. And so I think we should, uh, I think we all, I think we're all in agreement that we'd like to see something done with that property, um, beyond what's being done right now. And, um, I think that we should be providing the Martins with some harder and faster timelines. Um, and if anybody on the council has an opinion on that, I'd be happy to share that. And maybe we can communicate that to Ms. Bertram so that she can communicate that in writing to the Martins. Is that, is, is there any commentary on that?
The, the, the main thing, and it, and just for clarification, have, have you relayed to the Martins the, the, the fact that the current right-of-way into that property will not be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Given the fact that it's a 10-acre tract and the current driveway would divide that property and devalue it greatly? So that would not be an acceptable option?
Yeah. The only option that has been discussed with them as far as the council considering allowing them to potentially purchase that property is if they could obtain access to the rear because the current access would not be permitted. And actually, as I think I, they have mentioned, uh, they have made contact with the McGill Village, um, manager, but have, uh, at least when I talked to her last Tuesday, um, had not gotten an answer back from the owner. So they have not considered coming or using the current access.
So I, I think the first step would be to, w- without that information, um, it's very difficult for this council. Uh, impossible to do anything regarding, you know, without the information regarding the right-of-way. I think that would be, if you're interested in a, a deadline, I think that would certainly be something that needs to be, um, we need to establish a timeline for when we have that information available. If that access is not, uh, a feasible or viable option, then, then that, that kind of changes where we are in our discussions pretty dramatically. So I think, I don't know, 30 days?
Just to have the information regarding, um, whether or not that, that access is going to be feasible?
Right.
In, in some form of writing?
Yes. Yeah, I think that.
So you'd want something from?
From the Guild, from whomever is the appropriate.
Whoever's going to be giving them the access, that saying that they have.
They have agreed to it and that they will, they will, you know, as soon as whatever necessary legal steps need to be done, that they will grant it.
And if that access is available, then we can, you know, we can, we can proceed with an offer on the property. Or if that's what, what they, the Martins choose to do, I mean, that's certainly up to them. But at least we start to, to move, move the ball forward.
Well, and since they have, uh, provided at, I think by suggestion, a drawing that said what property they were interested in, um, it might be advisable to suggest that even as that 30 days is being, um, put out there for a decision on access or not, that perhaps they could go forward simultaneous to that and determine what value they would propose to the town for the purchase. Cause that's something that you all will absolutely have to have as a part of your decision-making and your public process.
That would certainly make sense.
I, I think that agree. I agree with that, that we need to have some sort of, at least initial proposal. We can certainly, you know, but we need to have something we can look at.
And you'd want that in writing as well?
Yeah, I think that, that should be in writing. I think that's, that we owe that to our, and our obligation to our citizens to be, you know, we're selling a piece of town property, we need to be, you know, at least providing that kind of information to the public for them to comment upon.
Only other thing I would add to it, any correspondence should be to Mr. Gary Martin. To him solely, he is the property owner going forward.
The personal property of the.
Yes, he's the owner of the, of the bill, of the structure, as far as we know. And he was the one who had the agreement with the town.
Right.
Um, and that gave that potential, um, for purchasing the real estate. But yeah, I think, I think Mr. Radcliffe is absolutely right on that.
And I did, uh, in my last meeting with Ms. Martin, who brought her friend with her, her father was not with her. I did tell her that in the future I want to speak directly to her father. So with the council reinforcing that, I think it's very important.
And I think that could be included in your correspondence to them, um, and at the direction of council.
Certainly.
And then I guess the question, I mean, they've, they've asked many times about a, a deadline. And I think maybe we need to provide them with a final deadline about what would happen if, if they're not able to locate, um, an easement, um, to that property. And I don't know if it's someone, if we want to give them a date or a certain number of days.
The first deadline, you said 30 days? Somebody said 30 days to get back?
Just, just to. Just, just to tell us whether or not they can move forward with that access.
At that point, if, if we need to know, have more information on what their option, what their other options may be and, and, and how they plan to proceed there. I, I would think, I, I, I would think 90 days or.
90 days from today or 90 days after 30 days?
I think, I think 90 days after the 30 would be certainly reasonable.
But, and that would give them four months from today, and that would be about six months from when we first sent the letter. Approximately six or seven months, maybe.
You, you mentioned that, you need to make an offer. Uh, I hope this, this make an offer that you have a priest. What should be a priest?
Well, I mean, I, I think they would have to have an appraisal, and then using that appraisal, they would make an offer to the town saying, we want to buy this property for this amount of money, and this is why we think it's a fair price. I think that's, I think Mr. Penn is correct. There should, it, uh, there should be some sort of appraisal as a basis for that offer so that we can evaluate that accurately.
I think had indicated, or she had indicated previously that if the property that had been defined on the drawing was acceptable, uh, then they would proceed with getting it appraised. So I guess part of my communication, uh, to them would say that based upon the drawing that was provided, it is, that's the portion of the property that we own, that you all would be willing to consider if they can determine access and after a, an appraisal and a, um, purchase price offer in writing to you all. Is that, is that fair?
Yes, I think that's fair.
Rather than put that four-month date out there, perhaps what you do, uh, rather than put something out there that, that might be misconstrued later on i- in the event that it comes to them not purchasing the property, is that you say with the 30 days that you're talking about, whether they can get access, is that you have some sort of, you, uh, address that at a meeting, either the, the work session in, uh, December or the first one of January, because at that point you will have the information. You should have the information in hand as a council of whether they've got a written commitment to get an, you know, an easement of, of that y'all are discussing on the back of the property. And if not, it, you can then talk about what timeframe from there and what you expect, given the fact that that is either a potential go-forward moment, uh, with, uh, evaluating pricing and everything, or a potential that if they can't make that, uh, make that happen regarding the access, then the unlikely nature of moving forward with discussing the subdivision of that parcel. And I think that's a, that's a valid point because, uh, we don't want to be arbitrary at all. We understand the s- the significance of, of what we're trying to accomplish. The, I, I think having that discussion after that 30-day period with more information in hand would certainly be important. And depending on where we end up going from there, I think, um, would help us establish that timeline and work in conjunction with them as long as they, uh, want to work with us.
I do think it would be awesome important in whatever correspondence, uh, I would prepare. I'm happy to send a copy to the council, look at it before it goes out. I'll draft it tomorrow, uh, morning. We ought to also suggest that in that same 30 days that you have given as the, um, point at which you need to go one way or the other about access, they should be using that same 30 days to look at the other option too.
Yes.
Um, so that you don't necessarily say you end or succeed on one before you start the other, you know?
That's, that's.
That they're running currently. If you all agree with that, I'll say something to that extent.
I'm agreeable with that. Me, same.
That's all I got unless you all have something else, or we need to discuss this particular one for it.
We've got to get this pen out of here.
Just as a reminder, uh, our next council meeting will be December 1st, 2020. Uh, the closed session begins at 5:30. Public session begins at 7:00 here in the town council chambers. Then the next one is December 15th, 2020. That will be the work session. Closed session begins at 5:00. Public session begins at 6:30 here in council chambers. And if I have someone with a motion to.
Ms. Penn, which of those days did you all want to try to have the, um, recognition?
Oh, yeah, I think that was on December the 1st.
December 1st.
So.
At.
Your.
Then we should probably.
Well, if you were talking about 4:30, then that's going to be about an hour before your session. Um, or you could do it that second meeting where you start at 5:00, and so 4:30 would marry up a little bit better. But it's really just up to you. I just think we need to decide on that so we can let the individuals who are going to be recognized know and have some time to plan for that.
The, the second meeting is the 15th, so I would, I would, I would think the second meeting.
And then just come in at 4:30 for that particular portion. We'll videotape that and have your start of your meeting at 5:00. Is that, is that okay?
That works for me.
Okay. So that will be December 15th, 2020, at 4:30 here in the town council chambers for recognitions.
And that will just be recognition, uh, service.
Of service, employee services. All right. And with that, uh, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Salute and all in favor.
Aye.